Okay, so we'll resume this meeting regarding school board attorney and at this time I'll turn it over to Dr. Pruitt.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. Thank you.
I'd like to briefly orient you to the yellow folder that should be there in front of you and so I can walk you through what our process is going to be this morning. During this morning's event, we will be having the opportunity for you to speak with the three candidates that are finalists for this particular process. What you have in your yellow folder is the resumes of the three candidates. You also have the schedule because in the afternoon you will have the opportunity to meet individually with those candidates. And I'll talk about what needs to happen after that in just a minute. On your left, you have your interview questions. And when you count the opening and the closing, there are 14 questions. And we have scheduled an hour with each of the candidates. So one of our decision points this morning is how you would like to do the questions. I don't know, Ms. Fisher, if you'd like to start it off with each candidate as the chair and then you guys can go in some particular order?
Well, maybe in order by number, district number, would that, would that work? Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
So a couple of things that I would like to caution or just make sure to point out and that is that these documents are public record. So anything that you are writing on any of this, again, is public record, so you want to be cognizant of that. We, we ask that you on, except for questions one and 14, we ask that you provide a rating for each of those questions and the rubric for that is below. What can be helpful if we have a candidate that asks for feedback? If, for example, you're going to give a one and because the person only, you know, didn't respond to the question, maybe a comment or a reason that you put that rating. A three rating would indicate that that person answered that question appropriately and would be ready to, you know, it was appropriate for someone who would be in a position of a board attorney. And then if you're going to give a five, maybe some comments on why that was a five. That is just helpful for us to, to provide feedback. You can rate the questions as you go, you can wait until the end. However you want to do that is fine, but we will need you before the conclusion of this morning to completely rate each question and, and have that completed. This entire folder will come back to human resources and will be scanned and maintained as a matter of public record. I will also caution you that we want to provide each of the candidates the same opportunity. So we do not want to stray from the questions that are provided. However, that doesn't mean if you're not clear on an answer that you might ask a follow-up question, but you certainly do not want to completely bring up something, you know, that, that is not part of the question. Because then, again, that puts us in the position of, we want to make sure that every candidate is provided the same opportunity. Your individual interviews, if there is something that we don't cover this morning, that would be your opportunity to have, to have that, whatever that topic is that you didn't feel was covered based in this, in this particular arena here. I don't know, Mr. Quick, if you want to say anything about the one-on-ones or anything about this process to the board?
I mean, I just, you know, you all have done interviews before, I mean, obviously, but I would just, you know, caution in terms of, you know, make sure to treat everybody equally and fairly. There are, I, I don't have a copy of the questions.
Oh.
I assume, you know, I, I can take a look at them.
Yeah.
I know Dr. Pruitt, she, she knows what she's doing. I'm sure there's nothing in here that would be, would be inappropriate to ask, but just some of the reminders, you know, to stay away from things such as age or questions that might lead to, you know, age or, you know, family, like children, things like that. So when you are in the one-on-one, just to stay away from those types of questions. Because you don't want any sort of claim of, of discrimination or anything like that. This is your process, so when you are in the, the questions, feel free to ask whatever questions you might want as long as they are within the, as long as they're appropriate. And if you do have any questions, you know, myself or Dr. Pruitt, I'm sure we can, we can answer them, but, you know, feel free to, you know, make sure that you get the answers that, that you are looking for. And you can proceed as you wish.
I will sort of serve as the timekeeper so that if the individual, you know, I may jump in if we have a candidate that takes too long on the questions. Because we do want to, it's a very, very tight schedule today, so we want to make sure that we're staying on, on time with, with the schedule. Are there any questions that anybody has? Yep.
Are we, are you going to address our, the protocol for our individual meetings with them this afternoon at this time? Or will we meet after this? Is this going to be just our?
So, yeah, this.
Ongoing for the whole?
I will, your, I will compile this information to provide overall feedback. And then after your one-on-one, if there's additional information that you wish to provide me, for example, the, in the past, what we've done is if you give me the feedback individually of where you feel for each of the candidates, you can share that information with me. Especially if it's going to be different from how you have scored the candidates from this morning. Because, you know, there could be potentially a big difference after you talk with the person one-on-one. At the end of the questions this morning, we have on the agenda the next steps for, as a board, for you to decide what the next step is going to be for this board relative to this process.
And I just wanted to make sure we're clear that they do understand that this is not at the culmination of this day that we're going to offer them a position.
That is correct.
Yeah, I have two questions. Do we get to keep these sheets where we've taken notes all day?
No.
No.
Oh, all day, yes.
Just wait for me to finish my sentence, okay.
I apologize.
Keep it all day?
I'm fine with that as long as I can.
Because what I was thinking is it may well be that there's an answer that I want to dig down into just a little bit more.
Absolutely. I am happy to come at the end of the day and pick up, if you wish to keep them, I'm happy to do that.
I do wish to keep mine just in case there's something that I, that we ran short of time on and I wanted to clarify. The other thing is the scoring that we do. Is there extraneous scoring, for instance, looking at what certifications the various three candidates have?
So.
A figure into our scoring, I know it's not on here, but after the fact.
It would not factor in on the scoring of the, of these documents here, but it, it certainly is relevant in the entire conversation as you, as you provide feedback overall on the candidates. So that would factor in after, I would say, after you do your one-on-one interviews this afternoon and provide me that feedback, that that would be the appropriate time to.
So there's no point value?
No, no.
It's subjective.
Yes, yes ma'am.
And I would also mention to the board members that you're not, this isn't like a procurement issue where, you know, the highest score is.
Correct.
You automatically choose. I mean, ultimately, this is the board's decision, so the fact that somebody, you know, as it went through, somebody may have a point higher than another. Ultimately, the board can decide, you know, I guess, whether they want to go with an in-house and if so, you will have the ultimate determination as a board to decide who you want to hire. So you're not wedded to.
Okay, yeah, and that's, that's a good point because some people, if it's a good answer, it's, they're going to rate it a five.
Correct.
I.
The, this process is, yeah. This, this process is just a piece of the information.
Okay.
It is not the defining information.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, well, we'll, we have about five minutes, in case you want to re-review the resume of the first candidate, the resume and information provided. And then Ms. Fisher, when we bring the candidate in, I'll just, you'll just start if that's okay?
We can do that, yes. Susan. Okay, great. And I just wanted to thank Ms. Gittens for bringing up the questions that she did and to your team for the responses. Because I think that clarified things for us in writing and I appreciated that and thank you. So if everybody's ready, I guess we can go ahead and.
Well, I'll go get, and I just, I was trying to stick close to the time since we advertised that first candidate would start at 8:30.
Okay.
I just thought it would be.
Okay. If anybody needs a break or a drink of water, can I get coffee?
Do I have time? I, I would just like to make a comment on the record. I just want to thank.
Dr. Pruitt and her staff.
For all the work that has gone into this process, as well as Dr. Desamore. This is our job to hire and create a process and hire a board attorney. We delegated it to professional staff to work on our behalf. They put together a lot of background information for us. We've had the opportunity to ask questions, recommendations have been made about process. We have deliberated about process and given instruction to the staff through the superintendent, who is our only employee apart from the board attorney. And an awful lot of work and staff time has gone into this and I just want to say how grateful I am as a board member for the work that you've done and for the process we have in place.
Thank you.
Yeah. I second that. It's not emotional, but I second it anyways.
Can you just clarify too that, I think you, this was a national search too, right? Yes, ma'am. Yeah, somebody had contacted me about that and so I just wanted to. Yes. Reiterate that. Yes, yeah, thank you. For the record.
Welcome, Heather.
Thank you.
We appreciate you being here. And so, do we want to introduce ourselves to the candidate?
The mics don't seem to be, I mean, I can hear you, but not. Okay. Bring it a little closer, probably.
Is that better?
Oh, okay.
It'll be like a hearing.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, is that better?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Board members, let's introduce ourselves to the candidate and then we can begin questioning. Want to start, Ms. Morgan?
Kathleen Morgan and I represent District Seven, which is the county at large.
Good to see you.
Debbie Jordan, I represent District Four, Fort Myers, Jesus, Cape Coral and North Fort Myers. You.
Good to see you.
Mary Fisher, I represent District One, Cape Coral, Saddle Bell, Pine Island and Boca Grand.
Chris Patrica, represent District Three, Estero, Benea Springs, South Fort Myers, Fort Myers Beach. Welcome.
Thank you.
Gwen Gittens, and it says Gwinetta, but you can call me Gwen. I represent District Five, which is the East Zone, east of 75.
Melissa Javonelli, District Two, actually right where you are right now, but in this area right here.
Betsy Vaughn, excuse me, Betsy Vaughn, District Six, that is the other at-large district. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll get right down to business and I'll ask you to tell us briefly why you're interested in this position. And please tell us about your skill sets and talents and work experience that you feel would make you the ideal candidate.
Okay. Well, I've been an assistant school board attorney, both here in Lee County and also in Pinellas County. So I'm very familiar with the workings of a school board. I've been in many school board meetings and had many conversations with school board members. I am board certified in education law and have been since my time in Lee County. I'm actually currently serving as chair of the Education Law Certification Committee, which is the committee that reviews applications and writes the exam for those who wish to be board certified in education law. Which has given me a lot of experience outside of my normal realm of working. Because being in the position of trying to write an exam for people, we use some questions that come from a question bank, but we also write new questions every year. So every year, we're going through the process of writing both multiple choice and essay questions that will hopefully allow people to demonstrate their experience in education law. So that's been a really good experience for me as well. But within the realm of working as an assistant school board attorney, I've dealt with most areas within a school district. When I first started here in Lee County, I was mostly responsible for just facilities at first. So I did all the construction, maintenance, those types of things, all real estate transactions. And then I started to learn about ESC and charter schools and purchasing. And now in Pinellas County, I handle all of those areas for the Pinellas County School District. And also contract review, board policies, charter application reviews, legislation, keeping track of legislation, updating policies according to legislation, all of those things that we do day-to-day in a school district.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Did you want to add anything else?
Well, I have been doing that for 14 years, so I'd like to do something a little different. So the opportunity to advance to a board attorney position is very much something I would like to do.
Very much, great.
Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Javonelli.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Where do you feel you would take the board attorney position in the next?
Where do you feel you would take the board attorney position in the next five years and provide examples regarding advocacy, district level services, I mean, district legal services and training?
Okay. I think one thing that's very important is keeping up to date with board policies, reviewing board policies, updating board policies, also keeping track of legislation. Every year, there's new legislation that affects everything that we do. So that's something I find very interesting and very fulfilling. Also, in terms of legal services and training, I do a lot of training now in my position as the assistant school board attorney within the legal department in Pinellas County. We have two trainings that we do every semester, one on student legal issues and one on employee legal issues. They're about three hours long. We do them at night after work and we address things like free speech, religion, due process issues for both students and employees, safety and security, those types of things. So we do those every semester. And then just Monday of this week, I did a training for school counselors on confidentiality, student records, public records, those types of things. I do a lot of ESE trainings, both for district-wide, also individual schools and our charter school employees. I've also done ESE trainings for them. I find it really valuable to do those trainings for our staff and to be available to answer their questions because it always seems that what you think may be the issues that they have questions about are not necessarily the issues they have questions about. So I always leave myself open to answer whatever questions may come up in the training. In fact, the training I had on Monday, the person who was running it had to kind of cut it off because people were asking me so many questions, we were getting behind. So, which is fine, I love answering them because I think the more informed our staff is, the better able they are to do their jobs. And so I try to make myself as accessible as possible. I always tell people they're free to email me, call me, whatever. If a question comes up, I'd rather answer it and help them than have them just struggle or maybe do the wrong thing. So I think that's very important. Yes.
We ask a question within someone else's question or only ours?
I think that we, I think we might stay with the process and just, I might recommend that if you have a question that comes up, write it down and then ask it in an individual interview.
And then in terms of legal services, again, I like to make myself available to staff. I think it's important for our staff to feel supported. I think they need to know that if they're doing the right thing, we're going to defend them and we're going to do what needs to be done to support them in their work. I find that very important because I, when I first got to Pinellas County, I went to an IUP meeting and I heard the staff say, "Well, you know, it doesn't matter what we decide because the parents hired an attorney, so the district's going to do whatever they want." And I think that's a very damaging thing for people to think. So I always tell them, "Look, if you guys are doing the right thing, I will back you up and I will do whatever needs to be done. So I need you to realize that. As long as you're doing what you're supposed to do, then we're going to be behind you and we're going to defend you." And then in terms of legal services, outside legal services, I think we have to be efficient in how we manage if there are any outside litigation that we need to do, that we're very efficient in how we manage that, making sure that we're keeping an eye on what we're being charged for. Is it appropriate? Are they using multiple attorneys when we could use one? Those kinds of things. And that's something that I've recently become a little more involved in, in the district that I'm in, trying to assist with outside counsel, you know, making sure that they have the benefit of whatever information we have as opposed to them trying to gather that information. I'd rather make sure they have it all up front. I think it makes it a lot more efficient process.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Then Ms. Patrica.
So we're going in order by district, if you haven't figured that out yet.
Okay.
I'm District Three, so I ask question three.
Okay.
Please give us a specific example of a time that your personal beliefs conflicted with a position you had to take in your current attorney role. How did you handle it and what was the outcome?
I think it's important to realize as an attorney and representing a school district that your role is to give advice. People don't always follow your advice and that's okay. So I have run into situations where I felt a certain thing maybe wasn't in the best interest of the district. I've provided that advice to the person that needed it. If they choose to go in the direction they go in, then I will support that decision, you know, particularly the superintendent or a board member. If they decide to move forward with something, even if I don't necessarily think that's the best way to go, then I will support that decision because I've given my advice and now it's my time to support them in their decision-making.
Find it? Great, thank you. Ms. Jordan?
Okay. Good morning. Communication is often cited by many board members as a critical element to a healthy board member/attorney relationship. Explain how you plan on communicating with the board as a whole and also individual board members, please.
Well, I was lucky to have a really good mentor when I first started out doing this, Mr. Martin, who I'm sure most of you know. He was very good at communicating, I think, with the board in terms of keeping them up to date on whatever litigation we were handling in the department or whatever issues needed to be shared with the board. He would write memos, I would do the same thing. Also, making sure that if there's a particular subject the board is interested in, putting together the research and either sharing it with a memo or a presentation in a board meeting. I think it's very important and also if there's any legislation of significance or a case that would significantly affect the board and the business of the district, that's something to be communicated either through email or through a memo, depending on how urgent it is and what I determine would be the most appropriate way. But I think it's important to keep the board up to date on any significant developments that I become aware of throughout the course of my work.
And then as individual board members, the same?
Yeah, I mean, my door will be open, obviously, for anyone who has questions. Obviously, my role is to provide legal advice, so that would be the type of advice I would be providing. But I would always be open for an individual board member to call me or come into my office or whatever they think is appropriate in order to ask me a question or to, you know, bring a particular issue to my attention. And if it's something that only that board member has a question about, then I would address them specifically. But if it's something that the whole board needs to be aware of, then that would be something that would be communicated to the entire board, either, again, through a memo or an email or at a board meeting, whatever's appropriate for the particular situation.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens.
I am number five. Okay, you're doing well. Relax. What do you believe to be our greatest strength that you've not been able to, I'm sorry, your greatest strength that you have not been able to fully maximize in your current attorney role? And how will this strength be more applicable as a board attorney?
Okay, that's a good question. In my current role, my interaction with the board is limited. I do, there are board members who sometimes call me on the phone or, you know, but I don't interact with the board as much in Pinellas as I did when I was here in Lee. And I think that's something that I would like to do more. And I think I can provide valuable information because there are certain areas that I do have a level of expertise in and I'm happy to share that information with anybody who could benefit from it. And I don't really get to do that as much where I am now because I'm not really interacting with the board often.
And when you were here, you were in the same position as-
Yes. Mm-hmm. It's just, when I was here, Mr. Martin went out of his way to make sure I interacted with the board a lot. So he would have me do presentations to the board quite often or he would have me, or he would write memos communicating what I was doing. And that isn't really something that happens as much where I am now. So I'm not sure the board is always aware of what my role is or what I'm doing. I present to them every once in a while, but not as much as I did here.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Vaughn.
Hi.
Hi.
How would you handle a situation where you and a board member disagreed about an issue or a course of action?
Again, my role is to provide advice and so I would provide the advice that I feel is appropriate to the board member. And then they either follow that advice or they don't. I, of course, will advocate strongly for my position, but if they choose to take another position, then that's the position that I will give them as much information on as I possibly can.
Anything else you wanted to add about how you would handle the situation?
I think it would depend on the individual situation and how it would affect the board as a whole. So I would have to respond appropriately based on, you know, if it's going to result in some sort of, I'm concerned about some legal action that would result as a result of the action of the board member, then it may be appropriate to take it to the rest of the board. It'll, you know, it would depend on the level of the situation. If it's really just a small disagreement, that may not be something that anyone else needs to know about. But if it comes to a point where it's going to affect the rest of the board and affect the district as a whole, then I would probably go to that board member and tell them that I really don't have a choice but to share it with others and give them an opportunity to discuss that with me and then move forward from there.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. And? Take a deep breath.
Sorry.
Okay. From a legal perspective, what do you believe is the weakest area of this school board and most school boards? How can you assist in improving on that weakness?
That's a good question.
That's tough, criticize the people that you're about to-
Yeah, although sometimes that's your role. Actually, I used to tell Mr. Martin all the time, it's not my job to be popular. Unfortunately, I give people information on a regular basis that they probably don't want to hear, but that's my role. I'm trying to think what would be the weakest. I, hmm. I think just keeping up with what is going on in terms of any important legal developments. I think that's, would be the board attorney's role to keep you informed as any important legal developments that affect the district. But I'm not sure that all board attorneys really inform their client necessarily of certain things that come up. So that would be something that I would be very conscious of, making sure that you're aware of any changes that affect your day-to-day business and day-to-day operations.
Okay. So I guess I'll go again.
Okay.
How do you stay current on legal issues that could potentially affect the school district? And what about legislation?
I think there are several resources, especially during the legislative session. We get, and I belong to the Florida School Board Attorneys Association, we get regular updates from Joy Frank, who is the lobbyist for the Superintendent's Association. She gives us regular updates on anything that's going on in the legislature. Also, through FSBA, I get their legal updates regularly. And also, I've recently, the House of Representatives actually has a service where they will email you if any bill that you're following has a change of any kind, either appears before a committee or there's new information on it. So I've signed up for those email updates for bills that I feel are of concern to the school district and our operations moving forward. So that's a good way to keep up on, as legislation moves through the session that we're currently in. In terms of important legal updates, there are a lot of services out there that you can subscribe to. There are, we, in Pinellas, we receive newsletters regularly about updates in FERPA, you know, student record information, updates in different administrative litigation. So I would make sure that we are receiving all of those appropriate updates from various services that provide those.
Great, thank you very much. Ms. Giovinelli.
What stressful situation you have ever found yourself in at work and how did you handle it?
For me, I think what's stressful is if I feel that someone isn't doing the best that we should do for children and for the district as a whole and even monetary things. If I feel like someone is buying a product or using something that is very expensive that maybe doesn't make a lot of sense. I find that very stressful because I feel I'm in a difficult position at that point because when I'm reviewing contracts and things like that, I will always point out to someone if I feel there's something in there that's inappropriate in terms of maybe not the best negotiation on behalf of the district. And sometimes they elect to go forward anyway. The way I've been handling that is I, the superintendent where I am has expressed to me that he would like me to share that with him. So basically what happened was I had approved a contract, which I advised this, I had advised the staff member that I didn't think one of the conditions in the contract was appropriate. It was an early termination, that would be very expensive for the school district. They decided they wanted to move forward anyway. It was legally permissible, so I had to sign the contract as approved as a form because there wasn't anything that would legally prevent me from signing it. And the superintendent came over to see me because he saw the clause as well and also thought it was inappropriate. So now he and I have come to an arrangement where if I see anything in a contract that I feel is not in the best interest of the district and the staff feels that they want to move forward with it anyway, I bring it to him first and make sure he's okay with it or see how he wants to handle it before I then sign it because I don't want to be in that position of signing something and having it be a surprise to him because he wasn't aware of it. So luckily, we've come to that arrangement because I didn't, he was unhappy with a contract that I had approved and I tried to explain to him that it was legally okay and that's why I signed it, even though I advised staff that I didn't think that particular provision was a good idea. So from that point forward, I have now, if I receive a contract I'm not sure is exactly in the best interest of the district, I bring it to him first before I sign it. And that's been my way of getting a comfort level, that he's comfortable with it. And normally, he'll talk to the staff member and tell them to fix it before he'll sign it, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
So if you could please tell us about a situation where you had to make a difficult decision and upon reflection wished that you had handled it differently?
I think sometimes with me, as I said, I become frustrated by things that I don't think are in the best interest of the district or in the best interest of children. And sometimes I get probably a little too vocal about that. So sometimes I have to, you know, kind of walk away and calm myself down and then handle it differently. But I think ultimately, you know, I do report to the board and I do work with the superintendent. So sometimes they make decisions that I don't necessarily agree with, but I need to move forward with them because that's my role to support them in their decision-making and make sure they have all the advice they need in order to move forward. I can't think of, unfortunately, I can't think of a particular situation right now, but that's the general way I approach those types of situations.
Great. Ms. Jordan?
When was the last time you thought outside the box, and how did you do it, and why?
I would say one of the challenges we've been facing in Pinellas, and I'm sure you're facing it here too, is what to do with students that we have significant safety concerns about, how to handle that, because, you know, so many of those students have, well, all students have rights, but in particular, students with disabilities, they have a right to a FAP, and how do we provide a FAP at the same time protecting our staff and the other students? And that's something that we have had many, many discussions about. The last one I had was actually as I was driving down here, because we've been trying to come up with a new program of some sort that would allow us to both serve students, but also provide for safety of our staff and all of the other students. And we've been, I would say, thinking outside the box quite a bit, trying to come up with different options of ways to provide these services in a safe manner with the staff we have, because of course, I mean, if we had unlimited staff, it would be easy to do, but we don't. In particular, we've been running into difficulty with law enforcement because we, while we have our own police department and we contract with other police departments, they're all pretty stretched. So, how to provide a level of security at these programs that we're trying to come up with, with the staff we have? So, we've been coming up, trying to come up with some creative ways to make sure that we are, you know, either using multiple locations, or using a location that already has someone, law enforcement that can provide the support that we need, those types of things. So, it's been an ongoing discussion. So, yesterday, we had another discussion about it. I hope we've come up with a solution, but it's been something that we've been working on for quite some time.
So, then the why would be because the need?
Yeah, the need, absolutely.
Thank you.
It's become such an important issue. It's always been an important issue, but it's become a much more important issue. Thankfully, in Pinellas County, we've actually created a program to help students with mental health concerns. We've used part of the mental health allocation and partnered with the local mental health agency, and we're able to provide very intensive in-home mental health counseling, both in-home and at school. Some of our students receive counseling up to five times a week while they're in crisis, and that has helped a lot with those issues. I'm part of the district threat assessment team. We actually have a two-tier level of threat assessments in Pinellas County. We've actually had this in place for quite some time. So, students that engage in a significant threat, or students who are returning from, say, a Department of Juvenile Justice program that have a long history of aggression or violence, those types of things, they come before the district threat assessment team, and we thankfully have this resource of this mental health program that we can refer them to, and it has helped significantly. We've had a number of students that we've able to, been able to stabilize, get them out of crisis, and return them to their school, or keep them in their school because they are receiving that extra level of support. So, that's been very rewarding to be a part of that.
And I'm next.
Okay.
You've talked about being vocal already, so this will be an easy one.
Yeah.
Tell us about a time that your tenacity and resilience really paid off during your time in your current attorney role, and what was the outcome?
When I was in Lee County, one thing that Mr. Martin always did was keeping up with legislation and writing memos to staff at the end of the session so that everybody was aware of what the new legislation was and what the new responsibilities were. That was not something that has occurred in Pinellas County. Other staff members, my concern was I wasn't sure that legislation was really being followed appropriately, that it was being communicated to those who needed to know. We, we had a couple of issues where things had to be done last minute because it wasn't communicated to whatever staff member needed to do it. So, after the last session, I had a very pointed discussion with the board attorney about how I felt that we needed to do that, that it was something that we needed to be involved in, and something that I started taking on myself in terms of following legislation and writing memos. And so now, that is something that we are doing as a, as an office moving forward, because I think it's very important. The average person is busy doing their daily job, they don't have time to watch that kind of thing, and that's really part of our role, in my opinion, to watch those and make sure staff is aware of them.
Mrs. Vaughn.
Tell us about a time when your initiative at work caused a change to occur. What was the situation, and what was the outcome?
Okay. I guess I kind of answered that with the last question.
Maybe you can come up with another example for us.
Sure. I guess there's been a number of areas where I felt like there was more that we could do, and I've tried to push that forward. Like I said, the legislation was a big one. Also, there are some things that I did when I was here in Lee County that weren't really the role of the Board Attorney's Office in Pinellas County, so I've kind of adopted them anyway, even though that maybe wasn't the role before I got there. For instance, charter school applications, I feel it's very important for us to have a very thorough review of charter school applications. They had a robust review in Pinellas when I got there, but I also took on the role of reading every charter school application and providing input from my perspective on all of them. And our charter school staff does appreciate my, me taking the effort to do that, because I think it provides them with some additional perspective. Because it's difficult with charter school applications, because I know you do the same thing here that we do in Pinellas, which is you take up, you take this application and divide it into different sections, and different departments review different sections, which is completely appropriate. But then you also need someone who looks at the application as a whole, because we're the ones that notice inconsistencies between, you know, you say in the ESE section that you're going to hire all these staff members, but when I look in the budget, I don't see all those staff members. And when I look in the staffing section, I don't see all those staff members. So, while that looks really good to the ESE department, in reality, you're not going to be able to do it because you haven't planned for it in your budget. So, I think it's very important that you have multiple people who look at the entire application. So, I do that, and also someone from the charter school office does that, and I think it allows us to have a, a good overall view of what they're representing in the application to make sure it's consistent throughout.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Finally, Mrs. Morgan, will you wrap us up?
So, yes, please tell us anything else you think we need to do about you that will aid us in making our decision.
Well, as I said, I have been in the Assistant School Board Attorney role for a while, and I would like the opportunity to, to be in the board attorney role. I have lived in Lee County before. I would be happy to move back to Lee County. It's, it's a great community, and I still have friends here, and I still have ties here, so I would very much be looking forward to coming back where that, to be an opportunity for me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, is that it?
Unless there's any.
And any other further follow-up or ancillary questions? Ms. Gittens.
You talked a lot about policy updates and all that.
Yes.
Does Pinellas use a company like Neola?
They do. I personally, I think you all have a good set of policies already that would just need to be updated. My concern with Neola is, Neola's policies are wonderful in the sense that they give you a guideline, but the reality is you end up rewriting all of them to make them pertinent to your district in the way you do things. So, while it's helpful to have that kind of as a starting point, you still have to actually put in the effort to redo them yourselves, and, and it's, you know, you're paying a fee for someone to give you something that you then have to modify. I kind of liken it to when I first started working here in Lee, in the construction department, they were paying a fee to the American Institute of Architects to be able to use the construction contract forms that they develop. And then we would take those forms and heavily modify them for our use because they're not really suited to school board use. So, I finally said, why, why are we doing this? Why are we paying someone else to create a form which that we then have to rewrite? We should just have our own form. And so we did. We created our own form, and then that saved the expense of paying someone for a form that we then had to change. So, I mean, I think Neola is great in the sense that it gives consistency among districts, but I think that you all already have a really good set of policies, so I'm not sure that it would make more sense to bring them in as opposed to just reviewing everything you have and updating it.
And do you have assistants doing the policy updates, or is that just you?
We all work on it together in the Board Attorney's Office, and also, there is someone in the district who's responsible for monitoring policies and bringing them to the board. So, really, we sit down and do the, we all sit around a table, not all of us, but whoever's pertinent to that particular policy, and go over it and maybe make changes according to what we need to change. And then there's a staff member whose role it is to then schedule it before the board and take it to the board for approval, but we're involved in the actual changes that are made.
When you say "we," how large is your staff?
Sorry, we have three attorneys in our department, similar to the, it's the same staffing model you used to have here with the board attorney, assistant school board attorney, and a staff attorney. So, depending on what the policy is and what the subject matter is, depends on which attorney works on it and which other staff members we bring in to work on it.
Mrs. Vaughn.
Yeah, so I, I just want to clarify. So, the model that you're working under in Pinellas is a, a legal department.
Yes.
As opposed to the setup that we have here, where we have a staff attorney, chief. Do you see yourself having any difficulties kind of moving to a totally different system? And if you do or you don't, could you explain why?
I just want to be careful that we're asking the same questions of all the candidates, and I wonder if this is something more appropriately asked by individual board members in their meetings. Otherwise, I think we have to make a notation to the, to the effect.
Right. So, we already, Ms. Gittens, we already entertained her question, and when I ask the question, then this is brought up. Can we not?
Well, my, my follow-up, actually, after the interview was done, was going to be, we need to add an eighth question, or a fifteenth question to include Neola, and I'm comfortable putting the brakes on right now.
Because of my question, or because?
Before we go too far, before every board member adds an additional question.
Okay, I'm asking for the chair to rule on this, please.
Okay, yes. So, I think because there's already a format and a number of questions that we, and I don't know if we have all made notes about Neola, but I did, and I would recommend that everybody puts that down for their individual follow-ups, and then I think we probably need to save any ancillary questions for our individual interviews.
I, I can do that quite easily. I just have a problem with the fact that we went to question, and then.
And that, and that.
The timing of, let's not do this. We should have established, quite frankly, in my opinion, we should have established that we're not going to go beyond this, right, and from the start. So, we broke it once, and frankly, it's.
And I apologize to the board.
And I'm sorry that you have to listen to this.
That's okay.
Very sorry.
That's okay.
But just, just the timing.
And I apologize to the board for going back on what I had said previously.
Okay, so we're going to add that?
And so, we will save all of our questions, extra questions for individual interviews from this point on.
Okay, so we should have.
And then I'll.
Done that from the start. So, we're going to add Ms. Gittens' question?
I have to.
I think it would be appropriate to do that.
Okay, I think so, too. Okay. Scored question?
It actually occurred.
I think if, it would, it would be appropriate to score it, because it is a, I mean, it is aligned with all the other questions that were rated, so, I mean, I think it would be appropriate to do that as well, the rate as you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So, could you help us come up with the wording of the question?
Yeah, thank you.
Are you familiar with Neola? What is your opinion of Neola? How would you use Neola? Like, what is?
Yeah, I mean, I think it, the question, I guess, as asked by Ms. Gittens was, I think it would be appropriate to ask if you're familiar with, with Neola, because some may not be. And so, you could ask, are you familiar with Neola? Do you utilize it in your current?
That's not, the question, that's not the question she asked.
I think the question is more, I, I did ask about Neola, but the question would be, what process are you familiar with, or have you used?
There you go.
In regard to policy updates.
But that wasn't the question that you asked. You actually, the word, the acronym Neola was actually part of the question.
And we can say, for example.
It was an extension, that was a.
For example, Neola.
Excuse me, but I don't, I think that, Ms., I think that Ms. Wallace was the one who brought up Neola.
No, I brought it up, because it wasn't mentioned. She said you spoke about policy quite a bit.
I simply, simply stated, it could be, what policies or, or procedures are you aware or have you used regarding policy updates? Example, Neola.
Okay.
And then they take it from there. Is that?
Yeah, I mean, you used that as an example. I mean, I was just suggesting, I think that's fine, and if they don't know about what Neola is, they can, they can mention that.
Okay. And then, so, Mr. Quick.
Agreed.
Will you reword that for us?
Yeah.
And then we'll add it to the next interviews.
It is appropriate, if you want to, at the end, if you need clarification on one of these questions, like, and you need more information, it is appropriate.
To do that.
To, to do that, either at that moment, or at the end. But, yeah, I agree, Ms. Fisher, about not adding any additional questions, but certainly anything that is relevant to the questions we've already come up with, that's appropriate. Because you, the goal here is for you to get as much information as you can relative to the questions.
As a group.
Right.
And that's why I brought up that question. She had talked a lot about policy, and that's why I brought it up.
Thank you. And Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I, I think that's going to skew things if, if we do that, because we, this candidate has already left, and I know, let's, let's say we're writing our notes and we feel a question was only partially answered, that's going to skew it to the next two people, because if we dig for further answers, then it might change, we might change it from a two, only partially answered, to a four. I, I think at this point, and, and even if it weren't from this point, would we, you know, for every candidate, say, well, we're going to give you a chance to fix three, that, I mean, really, shouldn't it, doesn't it tell something about a candidate?
I defer to you, Ms. Fisher.
The candidates have the questions in front of them?
Yes.
See, I wouldn't have even given them the questions, because, seriously, because to me, it's really, really important to have an attorney who listens. I know a few times, we've had times where, sometimes I wonder, not necessarily you, but maybe, I don't know, that maybe the board attorney has zoned out a little bit, and, and to me, that's, that's so important, but they have the questions in front of them, instead of having to take notes as we ask.
And since, since the majority of people are more visual than auditory, that I think is a great practice, and I noticed that she had the opportunity to read the question after it was asked. She'd take notes.
And, and sorry.
Anyway, so I, I just want to take a moment to clarify, just to follow up on something that you started talking about, which was the, the composition of our legal team. I mean, that we do have a staff, a chief, staff attorney, and, and other people in that team, and we have a, a school board attorney. And we have a school board attorney that we, you know, that answered to us and that makes sure that they represent the interest of the board as the governing body. But I think we need to clarify that there is often occasion where staff and Board Attorney responsibilities may overlap in that they do have to communicate and work together. So I want to make sure that we're not going to give somebody the impression that they're only going to communicate with the board and not with the rest of the legal team.
They're just answering questions, Mary.
Okay. All right.
May I ask for clarification on the additional question that we will be asking all candidates?
Yep.
I don't know that we really figured out exactly what that was.
Yeah, I'm still, yeah, I'm drafting. I want to clarify, but before, because we have some time before the next candidate.
Okay, so why don't we take...
May I recommend that the Chair take that additional question?
Okay.
Well, shouldn't it be written down and...
I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to write it down, and everybody will have it in advance. And, yeah, I mean, if you're, I can write it on a piece of paper.
And then copy it.
And copy it, yeah.
And did we say it was going to be scored or not scored?
I mean, I would recommend it, and certainly, I would treat it the same for every candidate.
Okay, so we're going to need a piece of paper for our public record.
Yes.
Got it.
Are we reassessing?
Is the next person for 9:30?
I was asked to put in a break, and so 9:45.
9:45.
There's about a 30-minute break right now.
We have a 30-minute break. Yes.
I just want to make sure that, I think that every candidate needs the questions now, because one already had it, so I just wanted...
Oh, no, no.
Somebody said that, somebody was saying they shouldn't, and so we've already had one that had it, so we get to stay with that.
Everybody gets it.
That's common practice.
Everybody.
Yeah, yes.
Just want to be clear. That's all.
We're going to be very equitable.
30 minutes, yes?
Just say, for example...
Wait, when's the next person?
9:45. So we have a break.
I've got my computer right here to do it real quick. And then we can print it out.
So are we, are we...
We can be recessed until 9:40?
Great, thanks.
Okay.
So we can just add the answer to that question from the first one.
Yeah.
Just transfer it over.
Yep.
I want staple.
Some of these questions are sort of, I mean, you know, they're a little bit.
Mary, so you're asking, asking this question. Um, did you hear that? So Kathleen's asking, and then we're doing.
With you.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
And this goes back to you.
Okay. Right?
I think so, yeah. If we follow the normal order, I think that's what'll happen.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Wonderful.
Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning. How are you this morning?
Fine, thank you. I'm Mary Fisher, I'm the school board chair. I represent District One, which is Cape Coral and the islands west of Cape Coral. And we'll go around and introduce ourselves to you.
Let me, oh.
No.
She's looking at me. We're doing the opposite way.
No, we're doing the order. She was looking at me. Big, right?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine.
Hi, Melissa Jovanelli, District Two. You know.
Good morning.
Good to see you.
Oh, Chris, District Three, sorry.
Good morning.
Gwen Gittens.
Debbie Jordan.
Oh, sorry. District, yes.
District Four.
I can't count.
Good morning.
Gwen Gittens, District Five.
Good morning.
Betsy Vaughn, District Six, which is the at-large all county district.
Good morning.
And Kathleen Morgan, District Seven at large.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, welcome.
Thank you.
We'll get right to it this morning. I'll start, and I'll ask you to just tell us briefly why you're interested in this position of board attorney, and what specific skill sets, talents, and work experiences do you think will make you the ideal candidate?
Okay, well, first and foremost, I want to just tell you that I am a little bit under the weather, so if you hear it in my voice, so if you can't hear me, please just let me know, and I'll try to speak up a little louder. Thank you so much for allowing me to come here today and having this opportunity to share with you a little bit about who I am and why I'm interested in this position. So I do appreciate the opportunity. I'm interested in this position because I've been practicing for about twenty years, well, a little bit over twenty years. And this seems like a good fit for me for the next step in my career. I have always been, part of my practice has always been child advocacy, and I think that this is a good fit for me as well as the board. And I think that that's really the gist of why I'm interested in this particular position. I just think it's a good fit. With regards to my skill sets, talents, and work experiences, I have been practicing since nineteen ninety-nine. October would have been my twentieth year of practice. And one of the skill sets, obviously, that I have is just being a lawyer. Being able to do the research, do the writing, being able to get the information and concise the information for my clients so they understand the information. I'm a litigator, which means that most of my practice, I have been in front of judges. And I have had to prepare cases, get evidence, try cases in front of the court. Been pretty successful at that. In addition to that, I think that I have some unique talents and skills that I bring to this position. I have some soft skills, which I have gathered from my professional training. In addition to being the lawyer, in terms of being able to research, write, advocate, I am a trained collaborative lawyer, which has had me do a paradigm shift. I can shift from the litigator to being a problem solver. I've had extensive training as a collaborative lawyer. And what collaborative lawyers do is we sit down, counsel to counsel, client to client, and try to problem solve, figure it out, try to come to some type of consensus for the benefit of our clients. In addition to that, I'm a Supreme Court certified mediator, circuit civil, as well as family law. And in that capacity, I've had to help facilitate a process so people can be empowered to come up with their own resolutions. So that's an additional skill that I have. I'm also trained as a guardian at Lydum. And not necessarily a guardian at Lydum under Chapter Thirty-nine, which is dependency. I have done.
Bless you.
Bless you. Attorney at Lydum work under dependency cases, but this is under Chapter Sixty-one, which is divorce cases. So I've been trained in terms of some aspects of child development. I've been trained in how to speak to all kinds of individuals, and as well as doing social investigations. Because what we do in that particular area is be the boots on the ground for the judge and come back with a recommendation as to what's in the best interest of the child. I have a lot of background in foster care, a lot of background in custody cases. I have, through my foster care representation as an attorney at Lydum, that's where I've gained my special education experience. I don't go out as an attorney, as a special education attorney. It's always comes through my foster care or dependency representation. So I've gone to IEP meetings, I've advocated for the kids and things, and I've done that for many, many years. The other thing that I think I bring is soft skills. Because of my professional training, I have had to train on being a good communicator, which means not just talking, but listening. Most of communication is listening, understanding. I do have a tendency to listen and then repeat in a summary of what you've said to make sure that I understand what you have told me and act upon that. I have some skills with regards to leadership. I'm out there a lot in the community, and I'm on governing boards of various organizations in the community. And I've been able to, I think, position myself in the community as a community leader. And I've been fortunate in that I'm able to cross cultural boundaries. I'm able to cross age boundaries. I could talk to somebody who's five at their level. I can talk to somebody who's ninety-nine at their level. I'm able to cross educational boundaries. Someone who's highly educated. Um, someone who's highly educated, I can speak at their level, and someone who may not have their GED yet, I can speak at their level. I have, I've been able to really have, um, the ability to reach a lot of different people. So those are some of the talents and skills that I feel that I bring to this position.
That's awesome. Thank you so much. Ms. Giovinelli.
Where do you feel you would take the board attorney position in the next five years? Provide examples regarding advocacy, district legal services, and training.
That's a very good question. I have had an opportunity to look at some of the workshops. And I know that you are in a transition phase. I know that Mr. Williams is in the process of, um, building an in-house legal counsel and that the board attorney will be primarily representing the school board and the members of the school board. So in five years, where I would like to see the board is advancing its twenty thirty envisioned strategic plan. I reviewed your strategic plan. I think it's an excellent, you do have benchmarks in there, so we would like to see how we get there. In addition, there's some, um, other issues as they come up that will need to be addressed from the legislature, as well as some of the statutory, so making sure that our board policies are up to speed and up to, um, what is required of us from the legislature, both federal and state. Specific examples? There should be a cohesion between the chief legal counsel and the school board attorney. There's a lot of things that will impact both. Uh, at the same time, there should be a relationship that is built where, when the school board has a differing opinion than the district, we should be able to bridge some gaps, if not, you know, take our positions and be able to still have a good relationship with each other to be able to promote. That's one of the soft skills and one of the professional skills that I've acquired. Even though I can turn my hat and become the litigator and the advocacy person, um, tomorrow I'm going to go have lunch with that attorney because I got to see you tomorrow. So that's one of my philosophies.
Ms. Patrica.
Just one more thing with regards to training. I love training. I've done lots of training, and I think sometimes it's very important that we don't lose sight of the fundamentals, the basic stuff. So I could see myself going back and doing some training, just on board policy. A refresher, what does Section One say? What does it mean? Um, where do we need to change, or do we need to change? So those kind of things I, I would love to do. And also with my background as being an attorney who's been exposed to a myriad areas of the law in my child advocacy, um, some things such as human trafficking, some things that, uh, what is it like to be a foster care student in the system? Those kind of things I can bring to the table and do some training on as well.
Thank you so much. Ms. Patrica.
Please give us a specific example of a time that your personal beliefs conflicted with a position that you had to take in your current attorney role. How did you handle it, and what was the outcome?
Well, that happens quite a bit when you are a child attorney. Um, an attorney at Lydum is appointed by the court to represent the child's wishes in dependency court. In, um, dependency court, we also have guardian at Lydums, who are usually laypeople, and their job is to represent the best wishes of the child. There's often conflicts, where even I believe that the GAL may be right on something, that this is not in your best interest to do this or to do that. But my job is to represent what my client wants, and that's what I do. I'll talk to my client, too. I'll try to see if I can, um, explain to them why this may not be the right course of action. That's my job as counsel, is to give you as much information so you can make an educated decision. However, when you have made that decision, it is my job to advocate for that position.
Ms. Jordan.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, communication is often cited by many board members as critical elements to a healthy board member-attorney relationship. Explain how you plan on communicating with the board as a whole and also individually, uh, individual board members.
Well, I believe in an open-door policy, open communication. Text me, email me, call me, stop by the office, that's not a problem. Um, I have a tendency to be quick in my responses. Once I get something, I want to get it resolved and explain to you as quickly as possible. With regards to the board, as things come up, a question is asked that is beneficial for the entire board to know, I will draft a memorandum or something and send it to all of the board members so that you guys are all on the same page with regards to this law, or this policy, or whatever the question may be, what the answer is. Just do not hit reply all, obviously. Um, but that, I plan to have an open communication with the board.
Okay, and I think it's my turn. We had a lesson before you came on Dupre.
What?
On your name, Dupre.
Oh, Dupree. D U P R E E is the phonetic.
Okay. All right.
And Dupree.
What, uh, what do you believe to be your greatest strength that you have not been able to fully maximize in your current attorney role? And how will this strength be more applicable as a board attorney?
Good question. Um, I'm a people person. I love to be around people. And one of the things that intrigued me with this job is that I know there's an element of some type of community engagement, um, on behalf of the board. And I would really enjoy that. Um, as you know, I am in the community. I, 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 I love to be in all parts of the community. So that was something that I would enjoy. I do do that right now in my practice, but that is more as my volunteer time. It would be nice to get paid for doing some of that stuff. Um, but that's probably one area. With regards to, um, my strength, being an attorney is being an attorney. Um, like I said, I'm an advocate, a litigator. I think I would like to have, uh, I think my client base right now is like fifty to sixty clients at a time. So for me to have seven clients that I concentrate solely on, that would be fantastic.
Okay, thank you.
That's great. So then, Ms. Vaughn.
How would you handle a situation where you and a board member disagreed about an issue or a course of action?
Well, my job is to educate, is to make sure that the advice that I give you is sound, based on the law, based on the policies, based on the information that I've gathered. And if I am doing my job correctly, hopefully we won't disagree too much. Um, but if we do, you are the client. You are the person that basically tells me what to do and gives me my marching order, so I will respect that.
Great. Okay, Ms. Morgan.
From a legal perspective, what do you believe is the weakest area of this and most school boards? How can you assist in improving on that weakness?
Um, I will tell you that a third part of the sunshine law makes your hard, your jobs very hard. For me, I cherish the attorney-client privilege, where I can talk to my client freely, um, explain to them my position, have it out when we need to have it out. By having everything in the public, and it's very difficult for you to be able to go to a room privately and just hash whatever it is out. So I think that makes it difficult for the board. Not too much we can do about it, it is what it is. I know that the Florida Bar has, um, tried to lobby for some part, especially when it comes to an attorney-client relationship. I think that is so important for me to be able to talk to my clients. But we are where we are, and that is, um, where we have to be.
Thank you. Okay.
And it's not a weakness on the school board. It's a weakness on the policies.
Oh, yeah. Great, okay. Um, how do you stay current on legal issues that could potentially affect the school district?
So there's lots of ways that we can stay abreast as to what's going on. Um, first and foremost, I, I'm hoping that the board attorney will have access to Westlaw, which is one of my favorite research tools. Um, I can go into Westlaw and say, please tell me every time there is a case law that comes out or an update on, uh, Florida Chapter Two Eighty-six, which is the sunshine law. And Westlaw will actually generate case law and, and just tell me what's going on. Even if a brief is filed, it will send it to me. Uh, please tell me what's going on with Chapter One Nineteen or One Twelve. Um, you know, public ethics and, um, public records. It will tell me what's going on. So that's one of my favorite tools. The other thing, of course, is being involved in your other legal organizations. The educational bar is so small. There's not a huge bar within, um, the Florida Bar for education bars. So you have to look outside of that. So FSBAA is a good resource, probably the primary resource, the, um, Florida School Board Association for the attorneys. That's probably the most valuable, uh, place where you can communicate and share information. Um, FSBAA has lots of, um, FSBA has lots of information as well that you can gather. There's also the National School Board Association, and I know that they're having their conference, I think it's in beginning of April, and a couple of days before that, they're having their attorney conference. So that's another area which you can share information and ideas with other attorneys, gather information. Staying in the loop with your peers is one of the most valuable ways to gather and know the information. Once you get that, of course, you share it with the board. With regards to the legislature, also lots of different ways to do that. Um, I know that, um, FSBA on its website will give you, uh, updates on a regular basis. Again, I go back to Westlaw because it really tells you what's going on. So there's just a myriad of ways to stay informed.
Great, that's awesome. Thank you. Ms. Giovin, Ms. Giovinelli.
What has been the most stressful situation you have ever found yourself in at work? And how did you handle it?
So, the most stressful situation at work is trial. You're going in front of the judge, and you do have, uh, your client's, um, happiness in your hand, if you will. And sometimes, and that's tough. That, that is tough. Uh, representing kids, representing adults. How do I handle it? I just stay calm. I'm the type of person who has a very high stress tolerance. And I am even keel most of the time. I, I hardly, you can hardly ever see when I'm upset. Maybe sometimes in my face, but you won't hear it in my voice, and you won't see any actions from it because I'm pretty even keel and calm. That's usually how I handle, um, those type of situations. Now, when I go home, that's something different. Um, sometimes I have a day where it's, everybody knows in the house Kathy needs to unwind and tune down so she can be charged, so I usually do that at home.
Um, if you could please tell us about a situation where you had to make a difficult decision and upon reflection wished that you handled it differently?
Well, you know, um, I would go back to some of the experiences that I've had in the, um, foster care system. I've had some, you know, when I first started being a child advocate, it wasn't because I was looking for it. Uh, somebody found out that I had done it in a past life and asked me to take some pro bono cases. And for some reason, I always got the hardest cases. And those cases have been difficult. I've had cases where, um, some of the kids, well, one of my clients was trafficked. Multiple cases of that, but one of them that was really bad. And we kept trying to get her out, get her out, get her out, and she kept going back, going back. And I remember having a meeting with the, um, guardian at Lydum, myself, and the child, and we were really trying to work with her to get her out of that life. And the repercussion of that meeting wasn't what I thought it would be. So I, I wish I had not had that meeting. Um, there was another case that I had where, um, one of my kids disappeared, and we couldn't find her. Um, we thought she was at the grandmother's house, so I called the grandmother. And, um, you know, we don't know where she is. I called the father, called him a few times, didn't answer the phone, and then that was it. Because we have kids who disappear all the time in the foster care system. Well, this child ended up, um, they found her body like about a year later in Miami. So I wish I had been a little bit more persistent, maybe, but trying to get a hold of that father, even though he probably didn't know where she was either. So those are the type of things that weigh on you sometimes. What could I have done differently? I, I will say this, that no matter what I do, I give a hundred-plus percent of myself, and I'm always prepared. And I do the best that I can. But I'm not perfect. I'm a human being, so sometimes you do think, what could I have done differently to make it better? I'm flying through these questions.
Oh, my goodness.
We're on the next page.
Oh, my goodness. We're almost done. Okay, so, the next one is, when was the last time you thought outside the box? And how did you do it? Why?
I think outside the box all the time. For example, I'm the co-chair of the guardian at Lydum program for Chapter Sixty-one cases. Judge Adams is the other chair. And basically, we just decided that we're going to start this program for, basically, Chapter Sixty-one is divorce cases. We're going to start this program in divorce cases, uh, because we just felt that it was a need. It wasn't something that was being done in Lee County. And one of the reasons that I did it is because I would call the regular guardian at Lydum office and say, hey, I need a guardian for this case. And they would tell me, sorry, we don't have enough resources for our cases, we can't help you. So I had, um, I had done this before when I was in the District of Columbia when I practiced. And I just thought it was so important. So we thought outside the box, and a few years ago, we just decided to do it. Attorneys were resistant, judges were resistant, and little by little, one of the judges that was a little resistant, I was in court yesterday, he has the brochure on his, um, desk because it's so helpful to them. It really is, it makes a big difference. So that's one of the times I thought outside the box. I think outside the box all the time. Here's what I always tell my clients. When we are together and we're negotiating, we're talking, we can think outside the box. Tell me everything that you want so I can try to figure it out. When I'm in front of the judge, I am locked within the four corners. So I try to be as creative as possible. I got that from not only the collaborative training that I had, but also the mediation training. And one of the stories that one of the instructors told us was, you have two women who are fighting about an orange. And they're just fighting, and they're going to go in front of the judge to figure out what's going to happen with this orange. What do you think the judge is going to do? Cut the orange in half. You get one, you get one. But if you sit down and you actually listen and try to understand, you'll find out that this lady wanted the orange because she wanted to make orange juice. So she needed the pulp, she needed the juice. This lady wanted the skin because she was baking a cake, and she wanted the zest. So now you can craft something that satisfies both of them without going straight to the judge and just having it cut. Both of them are happy. So that's kind of, I try to think outside the box like that, um, because I think it's beneficial to my clients, and it seems to, to work for me in my practice.
Great, thank you. Ready for me?
We're ready for you, Ms. Gittens.
Okay. Tell us about a time that your tenacity and/or resilience really paid off during your time in your current attorney role, and what was the outcome?
So I have, um, a tendency to be tenacious. And I have a tendency to be, um, quite resilient. And I remember one time I was in front of a particular judge, and I was arguing to get, enforce a support order. But the other parent was in Germany. The judge said, you know, Ms. Bruno, what are you going to do with this? If I give you this order, what are you going to do with it? I want the order. But what are you going to do with it? I said, and I got so frustrated, I said, Judge, just give me the order, and I'll figure out what to do with it. So, and I got the order. Um, and there's a whole other area, this Hague Convention and stuff like that, but, um, I was able to convince him to give me the order, even though he didn't think I was going to be able to do anything with it. Another time, uh, and sometimes in my dependency cases, I have gone up against the department on more than one occasion. And, um, sometimes they don't like dealing with me. That's okay. I'm still going to advocate for my client. And I had one time a judge say, what do you want me to do, Ms. Bruno? What do you want me to do? Well, I want you to hold him in contempt of court for whatever, whatever it was. And so she did. So, yes, I have to be tenacious sometimes. Like I told you, I'm usually calm, even, steven. Um, I think my judges know me now that do not be fooled by my demeanor because I can be tough when I have to be.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Ms. Vaughn. Tell us about a time when your initiative at work Tell us about a time when your initiative at work caused a change to occur. What was the situation and what was the outcome?
So, in my old life, so I've been practicing for twenty years. The first ten years of my practice, I worked for a firm. The next ten years, I worked for myself. Well, during my prior life, the first ten years, I moved to Florida, I think it was about two thousand and two. And um, sending my resume all over the place. And I got a job offer, I think it was with the state attorney's office. And I got a job offer with um, a workers comp defense firm. I'd never done any of them, was not interested in criminal. So I said no to that one, had no interest, went in the workers comp firm. My boss gave me um, a red book, a treatise, which is a book that summarizes the law in an office. So I had to sit there and basically teach myself workers comp. Several years later, the law changed in workers comp. And there was a concern about, are we going to get paid? Because they had changed how claimants attorneys were getting paid and so that would affect defense attorneys. So at that point, I said, well Kathy, you know how to do other stuff. So why don't you go out there and figure out how to do something different? So I asked my managing partner, I said, yeah, go out there and see what you can do. So I went to, I, I practiced civil law before, so I just showed up at a meeting one time. I, I told you, I'm tenacious. I showed up at a meeting one time and just kind of um, said, I'm here. My name is Kathy Bruno and um, I'm interested in doing this and this and that. So I got myself some mentors and I went back to my firm and I said, well, we're opening up this department. I'm gonna head that and we're opening up this department and I'm gonna head that. And when I left to open up my own office, I was able to take all those cases with me. So, and they continued to do other things because I introduced some other options for them to do as well. So that's, that's one area.
Awesome, great. Thank you for your answers.
No problem, thank you.
Ms. Morgan.
Okay. This is going way faster than I thought.
So what procedures are you familiar with relating to policy analysis and/or revision? And how would you utilize those procedures in the role of board attorney? For example, NEOL.
All right, so I would say, I'm not familiar with NEOL. I will tell you that. Um, I'm not sure what that acronym is for, but in terms of policy analysis and revisions. So I had an opportunity to um, review some of the board policies. I read some of them, some of them I skimmed. I know you, it's pretty comprehensive. They're well-written. Um, I know that they have statutory references that you can go back and look at. So for me, in terms of policy analysis and um, revisions, with the board policy, it's really keeping up to date as to what the legislature is requiring. What the changes are in the statute, what the changes are in the um, uh, in the process. With regards to policy in general, I think we're talking about advocacy. And being able to um, take a position and advocate for it, basically.
Awesome. So then in conclusion, please tell us anything else that you would like us to know about you that would help us make our decision?
Um, well, I have been um, a little bit on what has been going on with the district. I'm quite familiar with um, some of the issues that are coming up. Um, with regards to um, the millage discussion, with regards to some budgetary issues, um, with regards to some things that are coming down from the legislature regarding um, term limits, um, best and brightest. Um, I know there's an SAT ACT requirement for the eleventh graders. I mean, I, I have been keeping abreast on a lot of the different issues that are coming up. I have had some um, exposure, experience in going up to Tallahassee and um, advocating for a position or speaking to our various representatives. And um, basically getting as much information to bring back or sitting in committee hearings. I think that the skills that I do have are things that could be useful to the board in, in, in terms of my soft skills, problem solving, in terms of my ability to communicate all across the board, in terms of my flexibility and ability to adapt quickly, in terms of my ability to um, understand things and absorb things quickly. I do have a tendency to gather information. I mean, I brought my research materials here. Um, so that's one of the skills that I have that I think would serve the board. Um, of course, I have attorney skills. I've been doing this for twenty years. Writing, drafting, legal research, legal opinions. Those kind of things are innate. They're just part of being a lawyer. And you sharpen them by the number of experience and the years that you have. So any gaps that I may have is something that could be rectified very quickly in just gathering the information, cause I know how to do that and I have my resources.
Wow, amazing. Is there anything else that you wanna add?
I feel like it went through this so quickly. Or do you have any other questions for me?
Well, I think that we have decided in order to be fair to all the applicants that we will ask follow-up questions in our individual interviews in the afternoon, if that's okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for the time. It was nice seeing all of you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have a break?
Yep.
I guess we do.
Does anybody else want the stapler before I go put it back on? I'll, I'll put it back on. I want Mary to come track me down. Yeah, I wanna, I wanna, she saw me take it. I need her to witness me putting it back.
Yeah, it is.
I know, I.
It is a lot nicer than the one I have.
Mine too.
It's kind of nice.
It's a great stapler.
Would you notice a difference if it was an old black?
I think I have, I, I have Susan's old black one that barely works, I'm sure of it.
That's pretty silver.
Listen, wait, wait, when you return, I want your stapler.
The stapler, the chairs, those are the things that people leave.
We have great chairs.
The hole puncher. Hole puncher.
That's a good one.
How long is our break?
Yeah, what's, till when? When's the next person coming in?
I'm sorry.
Ten forty-five.
Oh, ten forty-five.
Oh, so we have like, we have twenty minutes at least. Twenty minutes.
Yes.
Kathleen.
My four o'clock canceled.
Oh, you luck out.
I do luck out.
We're gonna have two cars there. I hate that.
I, I, I'm not gonna have to have two cars now. We're both going to.
We have to go to the dinner in Astor.
You can walk away, step away.
Hi, morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you? How are you today?
Good, how are you?
Fine, thank you. So, we appreciate you coming.
Thanks for having me.
To meet us. And we'll introduce ourselves this morning to you. I'm Mary Fisher. I represent District One, which is Cape Coral, Sanibel, Pine Island, and Boca Grand. And I'm glad to have you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Melissa Giovinelli. I'm District Two, and which is this, right in this area, Fort Myers. So, welcome.
Chris Patrica, District Three. Hi.
Hi.
I... Oh, I can't count yet. Okay. I'm sorry. Just find the time. One day. I didn't go to preschool. So...
I am Debbie Jordan. I represent District Four, which is Fort Myers, Norfolk Myers, and Cape Coral. And welcome.
Thank you.
And now, I'm Gwen Gittens. And I represent District Five, which is east of the county, Lehigh, all of that area, east of seventy-five. And thanks for being here.
Thank you.
I'm Betsy Vaughn. I represent District Six. That's one of the two county-wide districts. We're glad to have you here.
Thank you.
And hi, I'm Kathleen Morgan. And I'm the other district-at-large seat member.
Thank you. Nice meeting you.
So unless you have any preliminary questions for us, I'll begin with the questions. You ready?
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, great. So, can you tell us briefly why you're interested in this position? And what are your skill sets and talents or experiences that make you the ideal candidate for this job?
Ever since being barred in twenty-fifteen, I started my career working with children. I started as a contract attorney in Fort Lauderdale, advocating for the best interests of children for the Garden at Lightem program. So there, I gained experience in trial, as well as attending judicial reviews and staffings with Garden at Lightem volunteers. So that's, that was my first experience looking at an IEP. Because in law school, I didn't really, you know, depend, I mean, education law is not really a big thing.
Right.
First time seeing what an IEP is and seeing that there's federal requirements that the school districts have to comply with in order for the child to get the best free and appropriate public education. And then, I worked for one year in West Palm for the Office of Regional Counsel, where I represented indigent parents whose children were taken away due to allegations of abuse, abandonment, and neglect. So there, I was able to get more trial experience. I did dependency trials, mediations, as well as termination of parental rights trials. And then, I've been work, now currently, I've been working at Legal Aid for two and a half years. And that was my first time doing education law. So there, I, I assist clients, both court-appointed clients, as well as clients who come into the door to make sure that their children have the best IEPs and five or four plans. I have filed a few due process complaints, but the general counsel there, we usually are able to work out, come to like a amicable agreement where the child gets the services that he or she needs. But I feel like, based on all of my experiences from twenty-fifteen until now, I have the experiences and qualifications to take my career to the next level, to be able to advocate for a larger entity, be able to serve a greater good.
Thank you so much. Great. Ms. Giovinelli.
Where do you feel you would take the board attorney position in the next five years? Provide examples regarding advocacy, district legal services, and training.
My current position at Legal Aid requires me to do outreach events, to be able to promote the organization. And it requires me to advocate for the client's needs to the best of my ability. And I receive, I receive extensive training at my current position. And I feel like I would be able to continue doing that for this organization by promote, by promoting the organization, by advocating for Lee County Public Schools, and by continuing to train myself to be the best attorney possible in this area of law. So, I feel like, you know, I would strive for higher levels to do the best that I can for the organization.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Chris Patrica.
If you could please give us a specific example of a time that your personal beliefs conflicted with a position that you had to take in your current attorney role. How did you handle it and what was the outcome?
When I was working at the Office of Regional Counsel in West Palm Beach, I had to represent clients who, who sexually abused their children. And for, and I know people in my family, I have cousins who were sexually abused, so it was kind of tough for me to be able to represent that client. But, you know, at the same time, when you take an oath of an attorney, you have to be able to advocate for your client. So, you know, I was able to sit back and really get to know the client, know their, their personal lives from the beginning of their life, and try to understand how the situation might have happened and, and, you know, understand that they come from, some of them may come from poverty, or they may have been abused themselves, and just try to understand how they got themselves into the situation, to be able to still provide the best advocacy for them.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Jordan?
Yeah. Okay, Jason. Communication is often cited by many board members as a critical element to a healthy board member-attorney relationship. Explain how you plan on communicating with the board as a whole and also individual board members.
For my first job at the Garden at Lightem program until now, all of the attorneys I work with, we have open communication as far as having frequent meetings and being able to express our thoughts as a whole, and being able to reconcile our different opinions to come to a common conclusion. So... So if I were offered this position, I would continue that open communication of, you know, expressing ideas with the board members, as well as attorneys, to be able to come up with a common solution to a problem.
I'm coming. Okay. How are you? Why do you believe, what, I'm sorry, let me start again. What do you believe to be your greatest strength that you have not been able to fully maximize in your current attorney role? And how will this strength be more applicable as a board attorney?
I believe that my greatest strength is research, writing, and litigation. And in my current role, my current role has allowed me to get my feet wet, so to speak, in education law. Has allowed me to attend IEP meetings and five oh four plan meetings. And I continue to receive trial experience from the cases that I get through the court appointments. So I continue going to TPR trials and dependency trials and mediations. But I believe that this position would allow me to go to hearings for education cases and be able to gain my skills as far, as far as education, and to be able to do all facets of education law, rather than just simply attend IEP and five oh four plan meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Great. So Ms. Vaughn.
Hi. How would you handle the situation where you and a board member disagreed about an issue or a course of action?
In a situation where a board member and I disagreed about an issue, I would talk to the board member and find out why he or she believes what he or she believes. And then I would tell them my point of view. And then, I think we would try to come up with a common bond or a common goal that we could both agree on, so that we would be able to come to a final solution that we both can agree on and be proud of.
Thank you.
And finally?
No. Next. A legal perspective. What do you believe is the weakest area of this and most school boards? How can you assist in improving on that weakness?
I work with Collier County Public Schools currently, and I work with Mr. Fishbane, who's the general counsel down there. And he does a great job at making sure the IEPs and the five oh four fours are good and, and to not skip on anything. But I think the weakest area is just having so many students and being able to not let one of them fall through the cracks. So I think I can assist on improving on that weakness, just based on working in Fort Lauderdale and West Palm, and now in Naples, dealing with a high caseload, just being able to keep on top of every single case, to make sure that no deadline is missed and that every, every student gets the best IEP and five oh four plan, and everything is as best as possible despite the high caseloads.
Thank you. So Jason, how do you stay current on legal issues that could potentially affect the school district? And then what about legislation?
For me, networking is big, as well as, you know, just doing personal research online. I'll be attending my first LRP in New Orleans in May to stay abreast on education law. And also, I'll be trying to attend the rights law training this year. And I have a volunteer at Legal Aid that's practiced education law for thirty years up in Massachusetts, that I talk to continuously. So I try to keep my network as big as possible. Also, I'm a member of a Google group of special education attorneys that we can shoot questions to. So for me, just my own research, as well as CLEs and talking to other attorneys that practice the area of law that I practice.
So you're constantly learning.
Yes.
Yes. And others have lots of good information, don't they?
Yeah. Especially attorneys that have been there longer than I have.
Thank you. May I ask what LRP is? Can you, can you tell us what?
LRP.
Well, LRP, it's, it's a yearly training. There, there's one for school board attorneys, and then there's one for attorneys that advocate for another side against school boards. And it happens once a year in various cities. So this year is New Orleans. I believe next year is Phoenix.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for clarifying that. So then, Ms. Giovinelli.
What has been the most stressful, stressful situation you have ever found yourself in at work? And how did you handle it?
Most stressful situation at work was particularly when I worked in West Palm Beach, representing indigent parents and having an extremely high caseload. There was a week where I had about three trials in one week, three termination of parental rights trials, where the state DCF has to prove by clear and convincing evidence that the parent's rights needs to be terminated. And I handled the situation by, you know, just staying up late until past midnight to go through all of the discovery and make sure I was fully prepared.
If you could please tell us about a situation where you had to make a difficult decision and, upon reflection, wished that you had handled it differently.
So when working at, in West Palm Beach, representing parents, their decisions, their decision to sign surrenders if they don't feel like they want to go through with a termination of parental rights trial. And I, I mean, I hate, I hated to see them signing away their rights. So when I first started practicing in, for, in West Palm Beach for the Office of Regional Counsel, you know, I guess the difficult decision is that I, I guess I wish I, there are times where I wish I talked to them more about it, about the implications of giving up on their, on fighting for their children. And I improved on it by really making sure that they understood the implications of what they were doing, and making sure they're fully advised. So now it is my practice that, even when working at Legal Aid now, that I fully explain all of their rights, the procedural safeguards and everything, make sure that all of the parents are fully informed of the implications of each action that they take.
Thank you. Great, thank you. So, Ms. Jordan? Okay, Jason, it's a big one. No, just kidding. Okay. When, when was the last time you thought outside the box? And how did you do it? And why?
Last time, most recently, was a client that I have in Amokalee, where they believed that their child was being bullied. And they took their child out of school to a virtual school because they, they weren't satisfied with how, how the school was in Amokalee as far as their child getting bullied. And they were bent on moving to Naples so that their child would get a different opportunity at, at a Naples school as opposed to Amokalee school, where they believed that their child was being bullied based on what country they came from. And so I was able to, rather than keep it black or white and wait until the child moved to Naples and the family moved to Naples, I was able to explore other options, out-of-zone options, that was a, where I was able to get the child to a different school within Collier County, where I didn't have to wait until the family moved to Naples.
Excellent. Very good. Okay. Tell us about a time that your tenacity or resilience really paid off during your time in your current attorney role? And what was the outcome?
So I had a case just last year where a child was kicked out of a charter school because he had brought sparkling water to school, and the school thought it was soda. And he had a meltdown. He had just the five oh four plan at the time. And, and the mother really didn't want the child to go to a alternative school. She wanted the child to go to, not necessarily back at the same charter school, but just a normal public school within Collier County. And I wasn't able to come to an agreement to initially get the child back at a public school because they really thought that child belonged at a alternative school. But after filing due process, and the case was a mess because of the charter school case, so, you know, the district attorney told me I'd have to deal with the charter school attorney, but then the charter school attorney told me I had to deal with the, the school district attorney. So I had to go back and forth and file due process. Ultimately, I was able to get a result to get the child back to a public school in Collier County, and to increase the services because of his, it turned out that he does have more severe emotional issues than, that warranted more than just the five oh four plan.
Great. So Ms. Vaughn. Thank you.
Jason, tell us about a time when your initiative at work caused change to occur. What was the situation? And what was the outcome?
Currently, at Legal Aid, service of Collier County, we do a lot of outreach to be able to let the community know the type of work that we do, and so that indigent clients in Collier County can receive our services so that they could live the best lives possible. So ever since I started Legal Aid, I, I've been big on outreach. So, you know, because of my love for networking, I've been able to, to find more funders and people that were, was, are now able to contribute to our organization. And by receiving good results, because oftentimes, like a grantor would bring a case into Legal Aid, and then if, if they're satisfied with the outcome, you know, they're, you're more willing to find other people to donate, or donate themselves. So I'd say, because of my love for outreach and networking, I was able to, no, well, not just myself, but other, other people at Legal Aid as well, we've been able to continue to grow the organization.
That's awesome. So Mrs. Morgan.
What procedures are you familiar with relating to policy analysis and/or revision? And how would you utilize those procedures in the role as board attorney? For example, Neola.
In my current role, I, although I don't deal with too much policy analysis, I do, you know, I am, for, stay abreast on both education law and dependency law. And keep current as to any Supreme Court cases or any other district court cases that would change the law in the area. So in this position, I would continue to do that and, and be able to stay on top of policy, whatever, any policy revisions and changes.
Thank you very much. So at this time, I'm just going to ask you, Jason, if you would tell us anything else that you think we should know that will help us in making a decision.
Well, I would say that I moved to southwest Florida two years ago from West Palm because my fiance- because my fiance was studying her pharmacy, doing a residency for pharmacy school down here. And I do enjoy it in Southwest Florida. So, I do plan to stay here. And I do enjoy my current job at Legal Aid Service of Collier County, working in education law. But I am looking to, you know, continue to challenge myself and become the best I can in the area of law that I'm practicing, which in this case is education law. And it's been a crazy two weeks for me. I just got married and just got back from Europe.
Congratulations.
So, I got the call when I was in London, so.
Wonderful.
I mean, I've, I've applied for this job in the past and, I believe, a year ago.
Uh huh.
Now, I guess another year of education law, so.
Yes.
I guess I'll continue applying and seeing what's out there until, you know, I can, so I can further my career.
Right, right. And, and that's great. Well, congratulations and good luck in your marriage.
Thank you.
And London's fun, isn't it?
Yeah, good London and Paris.
And Paris, okay. Lots of good food. Is there anything else that we need to know?
No, I believe that's it for now.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate you taking the time to answer our questions.
Thank you for having me.
And we'll see you this afternoon.
See you this afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, my friends.
The ones that are, you know, the ones that are tough.
Yes, my friend's getting ready to go back to Africa. And I was thinking about it, but I'm not so sure about that kind of travel right this.
Well, it depends on what part of Africa you go to.
All right. So, just to recap, we will need you to, if you have not done so, to complete scoring all of the questions. And just because sometimes we have confusion when we say overall rating. It's easiest if you just add up all the numbers rather than try to figure out what the average is because sometimes people get confused with that. Just put that total in there. And then now is to you all to discuss the next steps after I collect all this information this afternoon. And after you each provide me feedback based on your one-on-one interviews with the candidates. And I will compile all that. And then what is your next step?
So, comments, questions?
So, I do, I have questions. So, at what point do we make the determination we're going to hire or we're going to stick with the firm? I guess that's, are we going to have a workshop very soon after this one to have that discussion? Or?
I, I think I, that's at the will of how this board would like to.
I think that's what we need to do. We need to, as soon as practicable according to public notification requirements, schedule a workshop ASAP to have the discussion about what we intend to do next.
And then just for clarity, whatever, if there's a vote that needs to be taken to give any directive, it won't be able to be done at the workshop. You would need to do it at the meeting.
Ms. Gittens.
If we are looking at, in my opinion, if we're looking at deciding one way or the other, either firm or individuals, going through this process today kind of made me think we need to put everybody through the process, including the current attorney firm that we have. It was a while back that we, you know, interviewed them and spoke with them. And I believe too, we found out there's some new people that are coming on board. And, you know, not advocating one way or the other, but when we sit down in the workshop, if we have a current interview and information from everyone, whether it's individuals or firm, I think it gives us a better opportunity to make that decision.
Ms. Jordan.
Okay, well, I didn't know there was more people coming on. And which attorney would be the one that would be here speaking on behalf of, behalf of your?
Well, perhaps they could come as a group, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy, in terms of, I had called each of you and mentioned that Chris was leaving.
Yeah, Chris is leaving.
So, Ashley Daniels in my, my office is going to be joining. She's actually, she's sat with the school boards of Leon County and Gadsden County previously. So, she's going to be joining our team. You know, her and I are primarily handling everything. So, I would envision if you wanted to, to meet with us, it would be me. And I would ask Ashley to come as well so that you could know what you're getting. Because part of what, what, I guess what we are providing or offering is, you know, a, a legal team as opposed to just an individual. So, I would, would like for you to at least meet her if that's the direction the board wishes to, to take.
And I apologize, I didn't see that person's name, so I apologize.
Oh, no, that's okay.
Great, thank you. Ms. Patrica.
I guess I see it as a bifurcated process. I think we need to decide first whether we're going to hire someone internally or we're going to go the law firm route. And if we're going to go the law firm route, then if it's the board's will, then we can do this again with various law firms. But at this point, I think the board needs to make a decision. And, you know, we've been kind of dragging our feet for a long time now. And I think decision time is here.
Ms. Morgan.
Yeah, I, I think that we've had experience with an in-house lawyer and we've had experience with a firm. So, I think we know generally what kind of representation you get with either of those models. So, I would agree with Ms. Patrica that I think we need, the discussion needs to be about which model would best suit the needs of this board. And then, once we've done that, if we decide that we believe a better model is a firm model, then we go through the process of talking with more than one firm, which we have already done.
Right, right.
That's true.
So, can I just ask you then, do you think that would be necessary for us to do that part again?
To do what part again?
To entertain various firms when we've already done that.
No.
So, we would.
No, the discussion, from my point of view, is what type.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gittens, and then Mrs. Vaughn.
Okay, and my discussion on that, I believe, at least in my experience, the only experience that we've had is the, the time period with our current law firm. It is a different model. And I do believe we need to have a complete update. When we started this process, the only information we received about going forward was the model that was presented by staff. We have not had the opportunity, since we've been working with an attorney firm, to do an, an update and a review from them. We have heard from staff as to what they think. And I believe in order to be fair to the whole process, it was a new process. The board has always had an individual, so they know how that process works. But we didn't know how the process was going to work with a firm. We have done that. And I, I guess I don't see the, the need to, to just rush into this discussion without having all of the information. And I don't think we have the full picture and the information as to the benefits, the downfalls or whatever of a firm from the firm's perspective and then discussing it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
I'd really like to see this done outside the box, if you will. I, I think it would be important that if, in fact, we do decide that we want to stay with the firm, that since we're used to, to John Quick and we were used to Chris Saunders, that we would need to meet the new associate that would be kind of your alternate or your substitute. Is that how?
Yeah, like a deputy school board attorney.
Like a de, okay.
And I can always bring her to, maybe I can see if she's available for Monday or Tuesday.
If that's where we're going, you know, it may well be. And obviously, I don't know where the board stands on the individual candidates. To me, there was one candidate that was, even before I do the, my afternoon, was head and shoulders above the other two. And it may well be that instead of coming down to debating two individual candidates, that the most important thing for us to guarantee that we have the best possible representation, it may well be that we're looking at the present firm with the, the new member versus whomever we think is the top candidate. Why not judge our top candidate as an individual versus our present firm? Why not? Why do we have to decide, is there something? If you would give your legal opinion, is there something that says we have to make the decision, firm or individual? Can we not do it this way? Top individual against the firm?
And you guys can do it in whatever procedure you like, as long as it's done, you know, follows, you know, in the sunshine and makes the proper decision.
So, that's what I would like, that's what I would like to see. I would like to see us decide between whomever we feel is the top individual versus the firm.
So, Mrs. Giavanelle.
So, I actually kind of like that idea. However, I want to see what the costs are for the firm equaled out to the cost of an individual. I want to see, you know, what we're paying, what we, what the package would look like for the individual. And I would like to see what the costs are that would look like with the firm and this, if it's a savings or the difference. Because we don't pay, obviously, for your health care and so forth. And that's, that would be somewhat of a savings, yet I'm sure that the, the cost might be. So, does that equal out? How does that, what does that look like? That's really what I want.
Have you not provided that information to us on several different occasions?
I can't hear what you're saying, Ms. Patrica.
Have you not provided that information to us on several different occasions?
Not in a spreadsheet with what the, what an individual would be, the benefits were, the package and what that offering would be.
Well, it is actually, there is a document out there, because I looked at it yesterday, that has somewhat of a comparison. But I still feel that it's unfair that staff has put that together and it was not coming from the firm itself. I would think that they would have the opportunity to provide that information from what they have done. And staff has what they have for the internal auditor, I mean, the internal attorney. And then, just to kind of, you're talking about working outside the box. If we.
Can she answer my question?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I was just going to say, staff has.
Can she answer my question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, can she answer my question?
I believe that Dr. Dessemort has provided that.
Is it, is it true that, that we get that information directly from the law firm in the form of the bills they provide us each month?
Yes.
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah, we're currently on a retainer with you guys, a monthly retainer. So, that, that at least is the current cost.
But I looked at it as, yesterday, and there are questions I have on that. I would like to bring forward questions that I have on it.
I'd like to see them side by side and again, and updated.
It's there, it's there, we have it.
Well, not, it's not here, right here.
No, but they sent it to us.
Right, so, yeah, so you're requesting, you have, you have further questions.
I have some questions about it. It is, it is out there, the comparison of the firm versus the individual attorney. But I have some questions about it and I would like to see it updated. I can ask those if we do a workshop or whatever. And can I just say one other thing? We're talking about, you know, you're talking about thinking outside the box. If we do an, an internal attorney, there will be times that that one individual cannot do everything and that they will have to contract out. I mean, it's just historical. And when, like one of the candidates was talking about, they have a whole group that does things. We're talking about one person versus two or three people doing this job. So, they, it will inevitably come down to having to contract out for certain things. So, another possibility is who would we contract out? If you decide as a, as a board overall to do the individual, is it possible then to do a hybrid where we still maintain a relationship with a firm that has worked with us, that knows our needs and has provided services that are, you know, that are good?
So, so just before I take Ms. Jordan and Mrs. Giavanelle, I just want to mention that the chief legal counsel provided information regarding what responsibilities would be handled in the staff attorney's office under his guidance. I don't know that we have gotten that response yet or the, what, you know, like what would Weiss-Siroh to be doing in deference to that? I don't know that we have received that yet and.
Well, I think, I mean, what had been put forward by Mr. Williams was a proposal, as I recall it, and that wasn't the current.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Right.
I haven't seen that job description before, so that might answer.
Well, it's not, it's not just that, but we did, we did have that discussion. And Attorney Quick said that because of the new structure of the legal department and the school district of Lee County, things were being taken off their plate and they would bring back revised estimate of what they're costing us. And I asked that question of Attorney Beerman at the last meeting and he said, "You're already paying us less than we're worth, so you're not going to save any money." So, that, I mean, that, those questions have been asked and answered.
Yeah, I mean, I would say nothing has been taken off our plate to date. I mean, we're still handling the same things that we had been handling. We're still working with, with staff equally amount, equal amounts. I, in terms of like our day to day, I, I haven't seen a change, although I know that there's somebody that, at least on the current agenda, is being proposed to be retained in the, the legal department. So, that, that may change because of that.
One second, Ms. Vaughn.
Yeah.
Ms. Mrs. Jordan.
I was just going to say, we have had those numbers way back, even when Rob was here. We've been getting those numbers throughout the year that I've been here. Also, as far as relation, we have relationships with other law firms. So, it's not that we just have one. But I think that's really, what's really important is that we know who is, because we really don't, and nothing against John, I think you're great, but.
Thank you.
And the other people, we really never know who we're going to be dealing with. You know, Mitch could be here, somebody else could be here. What is the turnaround time for us getting what we need back from you all? And is that productive or is, is that an issue? But I just think that we really need to, we do have those numbers and we need to look at those numbers and, and not keep asking for the same thing over and over again when we already have those. And that is correct, what you said, Ms. Patrica. Mitch did actually say that at the board meeting.
Okay, so then next is Ms. Giavanelle.
So, the reason why I asked that question is the community doesn't know what those costs are and we need to have that conversation. And when you have it side by side, what, because I still feel, what, if we hired an individual attorney, we're still going to go to them to hire that out and, and get sub, give them sub work. So, what does that actually look like? That's what I'm talking about.
They charge us too, as well, for other.
Right, and we do use other, you know, so.
Additional costs.
Are we going to really save any money by bringing someone back in-house? Or is it going to cost us more? That's all I'm. That's all I'm trying to, it's for the community. It's not for the board. It's actually for the community to see in black and white, side by side, what that actually entails, because we've never really done that.
Thank you for that input, Ms. Vaughn.
Even though apparently we keep getting that information, but it's not ever been really educated to the community. That's all.
Yeah, I wanted to point out a misstatement. The misstatement had to do with the role of Chief Legal Counsel Williams. An essential job function of our board attorney is recommend outside counsel for the school board's approval and handle the coordination of outside counsel regarding issues involving the school board. So if we go with an individual, it's a moot point whether we're going to engage Y.Serota or company XYZ, okay? So I just wanted to clarify that our model is a school board attorney, and it is an essential job function for that attorney to handle any time he or she needs to go outside of his or her scope. So I just wanted to clarify that, and I'm still sticking with the idea that perhaps we should look at our top individual and our present firm.
Thank you very much. Ms. Morgan, and then Ms. Patrica.
So I would like the chair to poll board members about, first of all, do we need a workshop, so we can instruct staff to start preparing a workshop? I would like the board members to submit questions for staff that are essential for them to have answers to for that workshop. And I think I would like her to poll us right now, since we're having a conversation that should be having in a workshop, what the purpose of the workshop is. And I will volunteer that. In my opinion, the purpose of the workshop is to talk about which model we, at this point, want to go with, and then next steps. So that's, I'm going to ask you to do that, Ms. Fisher.
Okay, and before I do that, I will entertain Ms. Patrica.
So we did have that meeting, where publicly, on a screen, we had the side by side comparison of the numbers. It was at a workshop where that occurred. And I think that part of our role as board members is as questions come in, we have the knowledge in our brains to be able to answer those questions. It's not always about staff coming in front of us and giving us the information, and staff coming in front of us and giving us the information, and repeatedly doing that. We have to consume the information and be able to provide it back to the public as they ask us questions. And I agree with you 100%, Ms. Vaughn. It is an essential function of the board attorney to manage outside counsel, and it's kind of the equivalent, if we're deciding who that outside counsel is gonna be, and we're trying to manage that, we're stepping out of our lanes as board members. It is the board attorney's responsibility to do that.
Yes. And I agree with Ms. Morgan, the topic of the workshop should be what are, which model we're going with.
Yes, and Ms. Gittens.
As Ms. Vaughn mentioned, it does state recommend outside counsel. It is not stepping out of our bounds to make that decision as a part of the job description. The attorney, whomever they may be, is to recommend not to tell us that this is who they're going to be working with. The fact, in listening to everybody, the fact that there are still some questions that need to be answered, and some of those questions are concerning our current legal status, which, and in the previous meeting, you are correct, we had a previous meeting, however, we did not hear from all entities. We heard from one entity, and at the end of the conversation, if you recall, staff did say, "Our recommendation is to have an internal attorney." So at that point, to me, we should have everything laid out if we're going to discuss it. I agree, we need to have the workshop, but it should have all options laid out, all funding and budgeting laid out, so that it can be compared apples to apples, and then we can make the decision. I don't believe that workshop was the workshop that defines this, and we can end with that and say we're done, because we did not have everything all together at that time.
Thank you for that input. Okay, Ms. Giavanelle, and then we're gonna-
So, Ms. Patrica, since you remember what was, happened at all the workshops, why don't you just refresh our memory and what those two amounts were then?
I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but you're free to go back and re-watch the workshop. I've done that.
Okay, so what date was that?
I don't know the date off the top of my head either.
Things have changed, and things have been updated, and I think that everyone should be refreshed.
Fair criticism, Ms. Giavanelle. Shall we move on and call the vote?
So then, what I'd like to do at this point is, I would like to suggest first, before I poll the board, that board members who have questions that are unanswered, and I'm one of them, will submit those questions to Dr. Pruitt, okay? In advance of us scheduling a workshop as soon as possible, for the purpose of deciding which model we are going to choose, if not necessarily both models, because that is implied in the job description. And I know that even with Y.Serota, we still have had contracting with other attorneys for different cases. So I'll poll right now to see who agrees with that, and then at the workshop, once we decide on our model or models, then we will create our next steps and move forward. Is that, yes?
When, so we're going to do that before we talk about the three candidates?
I don't think so.
Because it's, to me, it would behoove us to discuss the candidates while everything's fresh in our minds, even though we have notes and scoring and all of that.
So, Dr. Pruitt, are we gonna do that subsequent to today? We're gonna, we're gonna submit to you our scores, et cetera. And then at what point do we come together and make our selection of the top individual candidate?
Well, it's challenging because of the different dynamic. I, when you first started speaking, I thought that the next workshop would be involve not only a discussion about the candidates, but then also the decision about which model or which direction the board wants to go. And we would do that as soon as possible. That was my understanding.
Can I have?
Initially, when we had that workshop, the onus was to come up with, do we have access to viable candidates that can be our internal attorney? That was the question that came up. That's in my mind, and after watching it, that's what we were deciding. If we went with the model of doing internal, is there anyone out there that could fill that? And that was why we moved ahead with trying to see, is someone out there? My angst about it is, you know, whittling that down to one person, as opposed to, you know, are these the only ones that we need to look at? And then we back into it by saying, but is this the model that we're looking? We really need to look at, I think, not deciding on these three people. I really don't even think that's fair to the people, to say, okay, we selected you, but when we have this workshop, we're gonna talk about whether we're gonna have you or do this over here. That's why I kept asking the question, are they aware that this is a process to see if we have viable candidates available?
Right, and so, it's my understanding, based on the responses in writing that we received, that they are aware of that. So we get through today, we choose our top candidate, we schedule the workshop for as soon as possible, at which time we'll continue that discussion. Which is the top candidate? Which model do, does the majority of the board prefer? And then what are our next steps? So at that, Mrs. Morgan, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I just wanted to interject two things. One, so we don't, from an HR perspective, I don't even know that you all collectively agree there's a viable candidate. Because sometimes you go through a whole interview process, and you say, you know what? There is no viable candidate. So you, in my opinion, you need to have that conversation as part of that process. Ms. Gittens, I will say that the board has made all the decisions relative to this so far. We did a national search. You all were given every candidate that applied. You all provided feedback. That feedback was used to determine who, if any, was gonna move forward for an interview. You did that collectively as a group. While there, the chiefs did review the candidates and make their recommend, that's all that was, was a recommendation. There was no decision made based on the district staff's review of the candidates. The decisions were made based on the seven of you.
And that was where, may I speak? That was where I was very confused about it, because in the process and in the timing and the steps, the, determine the interview selection committee, and I asked that at a meeting, who constituted that committee? And you did mention directors and executives and all of that. That was what was confusing to me, and in reading it, it said to me, well, we got the candidates, and this group of staff made some type of determination. So what was their purpose?
To provide our, just to let the board have information, because the board attorney and whatever, who's ever serving that role, is making decisions and interacting with all of the divisions. And so having the division chiefs provide input as part of the process. That was simply the reason, to provide, to provide input.
And refresh my memory, did we get their input written, or did we?
Yeah, I sent to you all where it came out and what, what our collective review was.
Okay.
Right, so then, okay. Ms. Morgan is in agreement. Can I see thumbs up for those who are in agreement to-
State it again, Mary.
I'm gonna state it again. Okay, so we're gonna finish our individual interviews this afternoon. We're gonna submit our information to Dr. Pruitt. Then we will schedule the workshop for as soon as possible to discuss whether or not there is a top viable candidate out of the three people we interviewed today. And then we're going to discuss which model the majority of the board prefers, and then decide what our next steps will be.
Can, is it possible to add in there somewhere at least an update from the-
Well, I, I-
So that we know, I mean, things have changed.
Yes, and-
So to be able to make a decision whether we're going to keep someone or not.
It's not the question that's in front of us.
The question in front of us-
We're seeking consensus on something you don't agree with, but that doesn't-
No, no, no. We're seeking consensus on a workshop.
At the table anymore, as long as I'm the chair. Okay, that's gonna be number one. Number two is, we will make sure that when we come to the workshop, we will have all current information based on the interviews from today and any subsequent information that Y.Serota has already been requested and will submit to us in a timely fashion. Would that be helpful?
May I ask two clarifying questions? One, is it reasonable for me to expect to receive your feedback today, tonight?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then secondly, I just want to confirm that I'm gonna work with Susan to schedule a workshop at the next possible time, allowing for the proper notice that we're required to give.
Thank you.
And can I just ask a clarification as to the expectation as to what you're looking from us? It is a financial expect, it's financial information as to if there's a change in the current agreement that you have with us, or if there would be a different proposal?
Well, I think it was gonna be updated based on the proposal from Mr. Williams, because he listed-
Separated it out.
Separating responsibilities and taking more into the staff attorney's team, so, yeah, and, do you have a copy of that, or?
I have, I mean, I have a copy from the last workshop from a few months ago.
Right.
And so you're looking for a, either a response saying our proposal is the same, or a revised proposal based upon that.
Exactly, thank you. Ms. Patrica.
May I propose that if any individual board member has questions for the firm, that they send them to the firm?
Yes.
And if any individual board member has questions for staff, they send them to staff, and if both entities could provide us with a deadline by which you need those. And then I have a legal question for you, Attorney Quick. Can we bring this up as a good of the order at one of our already scheduled board meetings on Tuesday? Or Monday? Monday or Tuesday?
For a vote as to-
No, for a discussion with regard to, if we reach consensus, could that be, we're looking at scheduling it as soon as humanly possible? Could that, could that-
Oh, I see. Could we do it Monday as part of that workshop?
Correct. As a good of the order, or at a-
Monday's workshop is only like two hours long, or an hour and something, so there's plenty of time on Monday if we did want to.
I'm sure you have good of the order on your workshops, though. You have them?
We do.
Yeah, but let me, but let me double check the-
Item C.
-policy for your good of the order.
All right, should we, we should be finished with consensus while these are-
We should, yes. Okay.
Yeah, Monday's scheduled from 1:00 to 4:00, at least that's what I have, unless the time changed.
It's not that long when you add up the items. It's only a few.
Well, that's if everybody stays on track.
Right.
Right, and we will stay on track, okay. So then, Susan, do you have anything? Do we have something besides a gender review at the workshop?
On the 24th?
Yes.
We have gender review for an hour, business services for an hour, and available housing for 30 minutes.
Two and a half hours.
I think that was, yeah, okay. Because I just looked at it, they changed.
All right, so then, all in favor of bringing it up for good of the order, a workshop at the 24th?
And I don't see a problem with that if that's, just to answer the legal question.
All right, so then.
You need to do this workshop that you were talking about on Monday.
Yes. Okay, so-
So I guess then I would request that if you have any questions that staff needs to address, if we could get those by to, well, today would be great, but even by tomorrow, before close of day tomorrow, that would give us the weekend to get whatever we might need to get. I just, if we get something on Monday, that might be cutting it a little too close.
Right, that's always the need to.
Okay, so by tomorrow, the latest. Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Seeing no further business. Enjoy your afternoon interviews and-
And I will come back at the end of the day and pick up all your yellow folders with everything in it. Thank you.
The time is 11:15.